The Board of Aldermen to order on Thursday, April 8th at 7:00 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by city clerks who love ring and Alderman Dow will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda for the city's website for the meeting link to join by phone. Dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 893-888-20492. The passcode is 264-334. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed in the Nashville Telegraph, City Hall, and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Clea.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone in my car at the moment, and hopefully I will be home soon.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
I'm present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I'm alone here in the room and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Lanz. Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present and I can hear the proceedings. I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Catherine. Alderman Mollsher.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear the proceedings.
You have nine in attendance.
And thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches. I will, as is customary, turn the public hearing over to the Chair of Budget, Alderman Dow.
Okay, this evening we're having a public hearing on legislation R 21118, establishing a housing expendable trust fund by appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of $30,000 into the expendable trust fund. Is there someone here to give an overview?
Yes, Mr. President or Mr. Chair. I will give a brief overview and I believe Director Sarah Marshant is on as well to talk more about the affordable housing situation, especially if you have questions.
Sure. Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, the, as we've discussed before, the housing situation is critical in Nashville. We have a vacancy rate of less than 1%. Housing demand is very strong, both for apartments and for single-family homes. As a result, rents have gone up significantly, and of course, housing prices have as well. The rents, especially in the smaller units, have gone up 40% in the last few years. Believe it or not, the demand and the escalation of rents is even greater in that smaller unit range, one bedrooms and studios than it is in the larger apartments. So we, as a result of these escalating rents, we have more and more people who are having difficulty paying for decent living space, people who are paying too much beyond what they can afford to just have a place to live. So we want to do everything we can to increase the supply of housing in general and particularly the supply of affordable housing. Now, as you know, Mr. Chair, we've recently established the workforce housing at Marshall and on Marshall Street. That's 150 units and we are currently working with the Housing Authority to finalize a plan to increase the number of affordable units at Bronstein from about 50 to over 200. But we, based upon these facts and based upon the activism of a number of affordable housing activists in the city, and I thank them for their continuing to bring this issue to the fore. We want to establish this Affordable Housing Trust Fund where we could deposit funds, which we can accumulate from various sources, possibly from developer contributions, in order to stimulate or help the development of affordable housing. So as you can see from the language of the legislation, it enables us to help with lower-income housing development, including workforce housing, supporting the preservation of affordable units, possibly support a first-time homebuyer plan, and other steps that would help with the affordable housing issue. Now, that brings me to the initial contribution. We are proposing that $30,000 be the initial contribution into this fund. I'd like to emphasize that this money is not tax money. It's not that this initial contribution is not property tax money. This is coming from Clock Tower. The way this is working is that when I was mayor before, we won two large federal grants, which enabled the development and the conversion of the mills that are now Clock Tower into 350 units of housing. And as a condition of that grant, there are periodic payments that come to the city from the Clock Tower development. These, this $30,000 is coming from Clock Tower. And so we're proposing that, since it's from that source, that we make this initial deposit from the Clock Tower contribution. And if this legislation passes, we will have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund activated so that we can, if we find additional funds, we can deposit those. And it makes the initial contribution from the Clock Tower funds, the contribution we're receiving from Clock Tower. Now, I know that Ms. Marshant has more detail, more information regarding the scope of the housing situation. I don't know, is Ms. Marshant on here?
Yes.
Okay, so I will turn it over to Director Marshant to provide any additional information.
Director Marshant.
Thank you so much. If it's okay with you, I'd like to share my screen. I have just a couple of slides to put up.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. So tonight, we're here to talk about the Housing Trust Fund. As the mayor has suggested, he outlined the purposes of the fund. The Housing Trust Fund, this idea came about through the housing study that Economic Development and Community Development partnered on last fall, that really highlighted the incredible need for doing more to support housing and affordable housing in the city. And so I was just going to run through a couple of those stats because it has been a while since we talked about it. But by all means, the full information is in the housing study, which is available on the website if you want more information. So first and foremost, the median household incomes of, and I'm not sure why this isn't full screen, I apologize. Median household incomes in Nashville vary greatly depending on race and ethnicity. If your, our white and Asian households have median income that's two to two, almost two and a half times higher than that of our black, Hispanic, and Latino populations. And a really important thing about future growth, and between now and 2030, we are expected to need approximately 4,700 new housing units, that's the very conservative number, is what those housing units, who needs those housing units? And the key thing is, if we look at the left side of the screen, this would be keeping today's or the 2018 household composition steady. You can see that one- and two-person households make up over almost 65% of all households in the city. And that was not the case 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, where there was much higher percentage of larger three, four, or five-plus person households. Based on our growth in the last five years, or the 13 to 18 period, and it has certainly even been exacerbated more so in 19 and 20, the vast majority of our households have been one- and two-person size households. And of these 4,700 housing units, we expect over 70% of those to be needed for one- and two-person households. So it's incredibly important that we look at the what and what we're encouraging and what we need to have built in the city. One- and two-person households don't need very large, single-family homes, which is, was what we were building through most of the 2000s. Again, of the new households we've added recently, the households are growing faster than population, and that's again because they are one- and two-person households. Single households accounted for almost 37% of all households in the new household growth in about five years viewed in this study. In addition, I think it's important to note that our older residents are a huge portion of that one- and two-family households. But there's also married couple households. Nashville is unique compared to the rest of the state in that, yes, we certainly have a growing population of older households and older householders, but we also have a very large population of 24 to 35-year-olds, which are our young professionals and our first-time homebuyers. And we need those people to fill these, all the amazing jobs that are open in the city, and we need housing options. And those two different age groups are competing for the exact same product. They don't want giant houses. They want smaller houses with accessibility, great locations. And so that is making that market incredibly tight. Affordable rental units are desperately needed as well. The households making 30% of the area median income, there's only about half as many units as there are people who need those units. So you can see here, the darker blue shows the number of renter households, and the lighter blue shows the number of rental units affordable to those households. And there's a giant mismatch. What is unique to Nashville also is the other end of the spectrum, that we have a very large amount of people in the highest or the more wealthy area median income, over 120%, that are renters and enjoy being renters. And we have very little product for them, which in turn squeezes our middle units, because they take up units that are, that they could, they very, very reasonably afford, and it squeezes out and helps to rise increased rents on those who have less trouble, or more trouble affording them. Single-family housing is still the dominant type in Nashville. You can see that 60, over 60% of our land area is dedicated to single-family housing, all the yellow on the map. And it is also over 50% of all of the housing unit type in Nashville. You can, the other, the red parcels, which are, there aren't that many of, are 100-unit plus, and those are making up a greater percentage of our of our units, but it is still a very small land area. And those are done in areas with great infrastructure to support them, water, sewer, roads, accessibility, and connections in general. As we all know, and the mayor just talked about, rent is rising substantially, 20% on average over the 13 to 18 time period, and it has gone up even more substantially through the last years of COVID. And in addition, housing sales and the cost of buying a home has gone up very, very quickly, even more so in the past couple of years. And so this, these rents are well over, these increases in pricing are well over 20%. And as any of you who have tried to buy a house or sell a house recently knows, you're talking days, if you're lucky, to turn a house around. So if you don't know about one coming on the market, it's very, very difficult to get a house. The last point I wanted to touch on is that downtown Nashville is very different than the rest of Nashville, and we need to think about that when talking about affordable housing and how we're going to make this work going forward. Renter households are much more prevalent downtown than anywhere else in the city. The darkest color on this map, here's Main Street here, here's our beautiful downtown riverfront, is 75 to 95% renter, which is not the case throughout the rest of the city. And so that's important because we can add density of housing there, and this is where we have infrastructure, we have services to support. But we also have the highest amounts of lower incomes in the downtown. And making sure that we're not concentrating poverty going forward, that we're spreading affordable housing out throughout the city, and we're balancing out our neighborhoods for the best outcomes for all of Nashville's is a key part of why we want to move forward with the Trust Fund. So starting the trust fund and the legislation that's before you includes the $30,000 initial deposit from Nashville Plaza Housing Associates in older agreement with Clock Tower based on the federal grants they initially got, as the mayor just reviewed, and continuing the $10,000 year annual payment until the agreement ends in the future. The program initially will be managed by the Urban Programs Department. And for the next step, says this is, as one woman very eloquently put it at the Imagine Nashville meeting earlier this week, this $30,000 is creating a tiny little baby of a trust fund, but to do what we need it to do, it has to grow. And so it's a very exciting starting point, but we know we have to be looking ahead from here. And so next steps would be to focus on identifying and developing additional revenue sources as outlined in the housing study, which may include inclusionary zoning policies, ways that development fees are paid into the fund, or partnerships, public-private partnerships in different ways, and a stronger assessment to understand and create a more detailed structure and administration for the Housing Trust Fund over the next couple of years as additional dollars are going into the fund, and we start to see the long-term management of these properties that will be keeping affordable. There is going to need to be a longer-term assessment on staffing and management and how all that works. But as we have just a little baby right now, this is more than a sufficient structure to get started. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions, and I will bring this down so you don't all have to look at the slides.
Are there any questions on what was presented by the Alderman? Alderman will share.
Thank you. Director, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Marshant. In your memo to the board in January, you talked about a termination fee. Is that something that, if it's not extended, could go into that fund?
Yes, that's a great question. So just to give a little bit more context, the program, the agreement with Clock Tower goes through 2027. And at the end of that time, there is a $1.3 million payment due to the fund with an extension clause. The key about the extension clause is that we may extend it to make sure that we're preserving the 29 units of affordable housing that exist through this grant agreement. So that payment could go to this fund, or the city could renegotiate it that only a portion of the payment comes to the city, and the rest goes to supporting those 29 units staying affordable going forward. But certainly that is up for discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not so much a question, it's just kind of a comment. I can tell you from the state's perspective, as well as from the city's perspective, how incredibly important it is to have this affordable housing in general, but to be able to set up a trust fund, and I agree with what was said about a baby growing and so on, and I think we need to start somewhere. It's too small at the beginning to really do make a big difference. Is that correct? Sorry, Marshant. I mean, sorry, Director Marshant.
It is, it is not intended to be used immediately. It's intended to be used as an investment for the future.
So the key here is to get it started and get it moved and make it available. So if there are grants and so on, is that what the whole goal is, as you said, other revenue sources? I just want to clarify that. So you're talking about things like that nature.
The goal is to find additional revenue sources that can sustain this fund and grow this fund over time so it can be used most appropriately going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Director Marshant. I appreciate it.
Any other Alderman with a question? Seeing none, I'll go right into the public hearing. The, we're discussing R 21118, establishing a housing expendable trust fund funded by the appropriations and making a supplemental appropriation of $30,000 into the expendable trust fund. Testimony in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Okay, Mr. Biaco? DeBacco?
Oops, sorry. Hold on just a minute. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Erin DeBacco. I work with GSOP, supporting the Nashville Area Chapter. I want to thank the mayor for for acknowledging that this has been an ongoing conversation and sometimes quite vigorous, and that this is a really important issue. We're excited to see the city moving in this direction, and we look forward to having conversations about how to get the financial support that the fund needs to meet the need that the Director Marshant so clearly just talked about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking in favor? Mr. Keating? You're on mute.
Yeah, I wanted to
Name and address for the record.
The name is Bob Keating from Five Coben Woods. I want to echo the the remarks of Erin DeBacco that very pleased about this initial step. So I thank the mayor and the vast majority of the Aldermen who have endorsed this. I appreciate the the efforts from Director Marshant for this. I think this is a very exciting, you know, first step here, and following the remarks of another advocate that Director Marshant has referenced, as I I think that, you know, often we say that the devil is in the details, and I want to go to the baby. I think that we've made the initial endorsement here in terms of a baby shower, and we're looking to, you know, fund for the child's future. And I think the number of possibilities, you know, from this in terms of developers being a very potential area to look at is, you know, an exciting possibility on this. So I just think this is, you know, a very good start, and that it does reflect, which I've always felt that there was a very, very strong endorsement by this, by this board and the mayor to say that we do want to move this in terms of the people who are most stressed by the cost of housing. Those are the people in the, you know, the 30 and 50% and below in terms of the area median income. So thank you for the steps, and I look forward to, you know, mechanisms and which will allow continuing dialogue from a community and to mayor to shape this, you know, trust fund. So thanks again for this, for this step.
Thank you. Would the clerk please note that we have been joined by Alderman Schmidt and Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Reverend Woodward? You're on mute.
I live at 36 Hampton Drive here in Nashville. I have been connected with an organization called Family Promise for probably close to 20 years, who now are in the city of Nashville at the old, at the church out on East Hollis Street. And it is a wonderful thing that they do is to teach people how to manage money and prepare themselves for the challenge of finding housing when they have lost their housing and have to live in a facility that provides an adequate basic life program for them while they make that transition. And I think this fund would also be helpful to other agencies that provide housing resources to individuals in the community. And that's my words for you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Seeing no one else? Testimony in opposition to R 21118? Seeing and hearing no one? Go to the second round of testimony in favor. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to speak in favor? Seeing no one? Again, testimony in opposition? Seeing no one? Like to make a motion to close the public hearing on R 21118 at 7:27 PM? Alderman O'Brien, you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that the Special Board of Aldermen meeting be adjourned by roll call.
Clerk, please go on the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lanz. Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Catherine. Alderman Mollsher.
Yes.
You have 12 As and zero NAs.
And motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:29 PM. We'll have a five-minute break and then we'll go right into the budget meeting. Call the meeting of the Budget Review Committee to order. It's Thursday, April 8th, 2021. It's 7:34 PM. As chairman of the Budget Review Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to the executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video and other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 893-888-20492. And the passcode is 264-334. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public with the necessary information for us accessing the meeting through the public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashville's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed on the doors of the city hall and the Nashua Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Alderman O'Brien, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman at Lodge, O'Shauna Kelly?
Here I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman at Lodge, Michael O'Brien Senior is present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone. Alderman at Lodge, Laurie Wiltshire?
I'm here, I can hear everyone and I'm, I'm alone.
Alderman Nurse Jettie?
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jan Schmidt?
I am present, I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman at Lodge, Ben Clements?
I am here, I'm by myself and I can hear everyone.
And our chairman, Alderman, uh, Richard Dowd?
I am present, uh, I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven of your magnificent seven present. Also in attendance is Alderman Klee, Alderman Cleaver, the Honorable Mayor, James Stongus, and Sarah Marshant, Community Development Director.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else I did not record? Seeing none, that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to make a comment relative to the legislation that the budget committee will be hearing this evening? Seeing none? Communications?
There is none.
Unfinished business?
There is none.
New business resolutions?
Before us this evening is our dash 21 dash 118, establishing a housing expendable trust fund funded by appropriations and making the supplemental appropriation of $30,000 into the expendable trust fund. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion to recommend final passage by roll call.
Okay, the motion is for final passage of our 21118. Is there any alderman that have any questions? Yes, Alderman Kelly?
Getting the unmute done. It hasn't been working for me lately. Um, thank you. I just wanted to actually just make a statement and thank everyone for their support. I was really proud to co-sponsor this and have been a strong advocate for this. Director Marshant and I have had multiple conversations around how we expand affordable housing here in Nashua. And this is just the first step. Um, I loved the analogy of the baby shower and now we're going to start saving for that baby's future. Um, so thank you for everyone's support and I really look forward to seeing uh what happens in our city as we continue to bring some real thought and planning to how we better approach affordable housing.
Hopefully you like real babies, they grow fast.
And don't talk back.
Yeah, I don't know about that. Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to weigh in on, you know, how, how wonderful I think this is. It's, it's a good idea, it's something we should do, it's something we should have been doing, you know, year over year with the money we got from Clock Tower, but we didn't and, and now we are. So uh, I'm pretty excited about that. I, as you know, I sit in on the uh, house, housing authority meetings, um, the commissioners meetings and, you know, it's, it's tough when they talk about all the people on the waiting lists. I mean, there are years and years, there are, you know, 2,500 people on one list and 3,500 people on another. How would, do you ever expect to get anywhere on that waiting list? It, I mean, it's years and years out. So I think this is a great idea, I'm going to support it and I hope in the future to find more money to, to grow the baby here. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Klee?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, I echo my colleagues' um, words as to the need and, and how important this is. And um, I also want to share that um, myself, um, Alderman Schmidt and um, Alderman Cleaver had attended a meeting, a community meeting with um, some from the religious groups and um, just other agencies like the um, Front Door Agency and so on, that were looking for something like this to happen. And they were asking us just coincidentally as, as this was being planned, um, what we could do to help. And I think this is the first step, while it doesn't necessarily meet their full needs, I think it's a good step forward. I think it's an important step forward and um, like every child, I'm, I'm excited to watch it grow and to be funded and, and so on. Um, so I, I just want to thank everybody that's worked so hard, especially Director Marshant and um, and other members from the board that have, that have worked to, to make this happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie? By the way, your hand blends into your wallpaper.
Okay, well, it looks like you, you were able to see it. Thank you very much for recognizing me, uh, Mr. Chairman. So uh, you know, I, I, I fully support this. I don't think there's any uh, question that there is a need for affordable housing in Nashua. Uh, but for clarification, I was wondering if Director Marshant could explain to us um, you know, hopefully the, as this fund expands and gets more money into it, how, how is the money in the fund going to be used? What is, what is it going to pay for, pay for? And, you know, how is this going to help solve the, the affordable housing problem?
Director Marshant?
Absolutely, thank you. Um, that's a great question, Alderman Jettie. The legislation lays out the basic purposes for how the fund can be used. Um, from everything to gap financing for renter and owner properties with priority on one and two bedrooms to preservation of existing affordable housing units, right recapitalization and preservation of some of those units. Except towards accessory dwelling units which create um, affordable units without over impacting the system generally and um, even some education. As far as the actual mechanisms for how this fund is paid out, that is part of the um, of the next year or two, the assessment um, of how we actually want to structure this. Where are these funds going to go? There is no um, and, and exactly how urban programs is going to administer it going forward. So right now, it's been, it will be administered by urban programs. The idea is to be able to look at additional funding sources coming in, understanding the balance of what the priorities are, conversations with you and with this community. Um, and then creating criteria and applications and a process to move forward with this funds.
Well, is that Alderman Jettie or you have?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Um, and, and we will now take the vote. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Clements?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. Alderwoman Kelly?
Very happily, yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion carries. New business ordinances?
There is none.
I don't believe we're taking anything off the table this evening. Uh, general discussion? Is there anyone that would like to be recognized for general discussion? Uh, just one thing, I did attend the Director Marshant's meeting on Imagine Nashua. And it was widely uh, attended. I think there was 84 or 94 people online. And I was amazed at how well it actually functioned on Zoom. But uh, um, a lot of good comments. Uh, I, I think from a visionary standpoint, I think it's an excellent first move. I know to get there to the vision would be a lot of uh, intermediate steps, but uh, uh, we have to eat that elephant one bite at a time, so. All right, any, any other general comments? Seeing none, also, we don't need a non-public? Oh, I'm sorry, the remarks by Alderman? None? Oh, Alderman Klee?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm, I'm going to repeat something I said yesterday and it doesn't have to do with your committee, but um, uh, myself and a group of people will be out on Saturday, meeting at Foster Square at 10:30 to walk up and down Lock Street um, to help pick up trash and clean up. And our public works people have been so incredible, they dropped off some work gloves at my home that I can share with at least the first 10 or 12 people. And we'll have those beautiful blue bags that we get to fill and Public Works is going to pick them up. So I look forward to having lots of people coming out and helping us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, I just wanted to say that I was fortunate enough uh, yesterday to attend the uh, the recognition of the Public Health Department at City Hall. I just happened to be in City Hall, which I don't think I've been in for months. Which is a whole other story, the place is a construction zone to beat the band, but um, uh, it was a, an excellent ceremony and all of our healthcare workers in the, in the, in the Department of Public Health were recognized and awarded uh, as they should be for doing a great job during the pandemic and uh, um, I, Director Bagley and the mayor recognized all of their staff, so um, good job to all of them. Okay, anyone else direct the, uh, excuse me, sure, Alderman Kelly?
You're fun. Uh, you just reminded me of a couple of things uh, that I wanted to just remark on and that's been going on downtown. Downtown barriers are getting a beautiful layer of color. I, my office is right downtown, so every time I go to get a cup of coffee, I get to see uh, what's going on. So really excited for the expanded dining. And then also a few days ago, the mayor and another, a good group of people watched the very first um, bite into taking uh, the Performing Arts Center to realization. So the Alex is gone, end of an era and start to new. So really looking forward to that.
It was very interesting, the former owner of Alex was there to see it taken down. Um, and uh, the only other thing I have, anybody missed at the beginning of the meeting? We were awarded the AOT uh, today for the Penachuck Middle School, which we've been waiting for. It's the uh, alteration of terrain, which means you can't put a shovel in the ground until the state says it's okay. It's okay. So the school will be very busy for the next 18 months. It's grows in size. Alderman Wiltshire?
I don't want people to think that John Coates is no longer owns Alex.
Well, that bill.
Okay.
No, he owns a place very much closer to my house and it's easier to get there to shop. Okay, no one else? Would the clerk please make a motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the motion to adjourn by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn by roll call. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Thank you. Alderman Clements?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. Alderman Kelly? Oh, excuse me, Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, that's what I kept trying to say too, Alda.
And Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeas, zero nays.
And we're adjourned at 7:49 PM? And we're adjourned at 7:49 PM. Thank you, everyone.